Do it six oh one. We've never started this.
The soup desk.
Because they've got three different, they bought them three different times. These are the newer ones. No, they're all dancers.
Yes? Uh, I don't think so. Am I on? Yeah, okay. All right, I'm not hearing it. You guys, are you hearing my voice out there?
There's no mic sound.
Yeah. Oh, there we are. All right. Get my late night radio DJ voice on. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order our regular city co- Regular City Council. What's going on?
Rowdy crowd.
Yeah. All right, I am gonna call to order our regular City Council meeting of June 12th, 2023. Roll call, please.
Zazada. Larson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdams. Verbic.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Mayor Barnes.
Here.
Six present.
All right, Alderwoman Zazada and Alderman McAdams let me know ahead of time that they were not gonna be here. All right, with that, I'll call up Shadow Gentry, Mr. Captain Hy-Vee, to do the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent work, sir. All right, now, I would take a motion to approve the agenda, but I need a modification to the agenda. Section N, we're gonna add Item C in our executive session, which is Personnel as Provided For in Five ILCS 120 slash two, C1. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda as modified?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Walker. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six yes.
All right, the agenda has been approved as modified. Moving on to Agenda Item D, Presentations. We have none. And Agenda Item E, Public Participation. We'll start with Tom Riley. Evening, Tom.
My name is Tom Riley. I'm actually a US Army Vietnam Veteran. And I also am a member of the American Legion Post 66 on their Honor Guard. And I do military funerals for those veterans who have fallen. On the other note, I'd like to publicly apologize for my actions three meetings ago when I talked about the Vander bleaks. I take full responsibility. I was wrong when I said that they dumped oil in the drain. They didn't. Their truck did, but that's another story. It just... So anyway, I just hope that the public can see that I was wrong, and I hope that I can mend the rift between my neighbors and myself. I'm a better person. I feel I needed to do this. I can't just live with myself the way I did it, so... If we go back to being friends, which we haven't been for the last 11 years, fine and dandy. Otherwise, there's plenty of other folks in this beautiful city that are my friends and everybody else here too. Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming up, Tom. All right, then we also have Mike Barron Jeffrey. And I forgot to remind Tom, I have to hold everyone to three minutes on your comments.
Good evening. My name is Michael Barron Jeffrey. My wife and I have lived on Ridge Drive for more than 20 years. I've spoken with my neighbors who are full-time residents in this neighborhood. And we want to see NIU Greek Life Center not- We do not want to see an NIU Greek Life Center on Hillgrass or Black Hawk. We do not want to see any building dedicated to a special interest group on the four blocks of the L. We want to see buildings that provide goods and services essential to daily living for all residents of the area. Our voices echo the voices of those who captured by the city and expressed in the revitalization plan. Those voices, the voice of people who want shopping, services, and other community amenities. There is no mention of constructing a building dedicated to the Greeks on Hillgrass or Black Hawk in the revitalization plan. There is also no mention of constructing a building dedicated to the Greeks at that location in the plan submitted by the Greeks to President Freeman last year. That plan calls for a development of a gateway to Greek Row at Russell and Greenbrier. That is a much more appropriate location for a building dedicated to Greek life. The problem with constructing any building dedicated to a special interest group on the L is that it will stand for more than 60 years, which means goods and services that are essential to daily living that could have been provided at that location will not be provided in that location for more than three generations. Now, I had the privilege of chatting with President Freeman about this matter. She expressed support for the building. She also noted that NIU is in the business of serving students, meaning NIU is not in the business of serving their neighbors, the residents that surround them. That responsibility falls to you. Serving more than 9,000 residents surrounding Greek Row is your responsibility. The people living full-time in and around that area ask you to deny every request to construct a building that serves a small portion of the population and instead approve construction of buildings where goods and services that are essential for daily living are provided. As you lay your head down tonight, I invite you to think about your mother. Think about what she did, or did not do, to provide access to healthcare, after-school activities, and other goods and services that are essential for daily living. Think about the access you provide to your children, about what you want provided to your grandchildren, or what you hope is provided to your grandchildren. And think about your legacy. Is your legacy one that denies access to goods and services that are essential to daily living to more than 9,000 residents for three generations? Thank you.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item F, Appointments. Number one, appointing Bill Cummings to the DeKalb Public Library Board for a three-year term through June 30th, 2026. And number two, reappointing Pat Fagan to the Police Pension Board for a two-year term through May 31st, 2025. Can I have a motion to approve these appointments?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six I.
All right, the appointments have been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item G, Consent Agenda. Number one, minutes of the regular City Council meeting of May 22nd, 2023. Accounts payable and payroll through June 12th, 2023 in the amount of $3,061,943.22. Number three, investment and bank balance summary through April 2023. Four, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through April 2023. Five, City DeKalb Police Department report, May 2023. Can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Walker. Bill, I didn't know if you wanted to comment on the new addition, the police report, at all, or no? And how that's a work in progress and will develop over time.
It's a work in progress, and those who have a minute can look at it. We'll see that what we- The next step is to locate the listing of the-
The zones.
Zones, so that- Or the offenses by zone, so we can see. But, you know, otherwise, it's a new addition to the regular reporting, what we wanna do. And the chief, I thank the chief for that.
Appreciate it. I think it's a nice agenda, or addition to our agenda, and look forward to enhancing that report going forward. Any other questions or comments by council? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Perkins.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six I.
The consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item H, Public Hearings. We have none. Agenda I, Considerations. We have none. And Agenda Item J, Resolutions. Number one, Resolution 2023-064, approving a settlement agreement to allow for the demolition of 825 Pleasant Street using Illinois Housing Authority funding. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Walker, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As the council will recall, about six weeks ago, the council took action to approve a six-month extension to a program, the Strong Communities Program, that is a grant program that is part of the roster of programs under the Illinois Housing Development Authority, IDA. We use a lot of acronyms in Illinois. And IDA's been interested in, through this program, in helping homeowners, particularly those who have found, because of life's troubles, the inability to keep their house up, to attend to the outside and the inside and the structure of it. In other words, houses that have come to a point where they need to be demolished. There's no way to restore the integrity, except at a cost which is greater than probably the sale cost of the house. And that was the case here at a house on 825 Pleasant. And the owner was getting notices from the city, you gotta cut the line, you gotta fix the roof, you gotta do this, you gotta do that. I'm out. I'm tapped. What do we do? So that's one of the occasions that this program is designed for. So if, in the best interest of the neighborhood, and the owner, and the city, and all concerned, it is possible to create a vacant lot for a new building, something that is gonna have the integrity that is wished for by the owner and everybody, then so be it. So we got a grant from IDA that still had about $63,000 remaining on it, and this particular property qualifies for that. And the total is a little bit north of $35,000 all-in, which includes some asbestos abatement. And it comes before you in compliance with the state guidelines, and we recommend your approval.
Any questions or comments, council? Yes, Alderman Smith.
Thank you too, Joanne, and Andy's not here. I know that's, this is the one with the foundation where that's gone, if you will, so thank you for resolving that.
Yeah, definitely. Hearing no other questions or comments. Roll call, please.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six I.
Resolution 2023-064 has been approved. Moving on to Number Two, Resolution 2023-065, approving the regulation of traffic for the purpose of holding the Northern Illinois University Homecoming Block Party on Illinois Route 38, Lincoln Highway, between First Street and Fourth Street on Thursday, October 12th, 2023 at 10:00 a.m. through Friday, October 13th, 2023 at 6:00 a.m. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Verbic, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. You all remember the reconstitution of our homecoming parade last year?
Yeah, it was a great event.
It was a great event, and it was a good kickoff. And after the event and the- And the review of how it went and what we'd like to do, there was a lot of conversation about expanding it, not just the parade, but trying to incorporate the new streetscape and the pride that businesses along that streetscape have, and to maybe do a car show and some other things. And so, a group of NIU representatives, representatives from our Public Works Department, Police Department, and downtown businesses have been meeting regularly. And I compliment them on what they've been able to come up with. And in order to get the approval of the State of Illinois for the use of our downtown streetscape, first and fourth, for this particular event, we need to come to you. With the approval of this resolution, we'll send it downstate, and we're confident that the IDOT will approve it. So it's a necessary step, and I think the right step to expand this wonderful thing.
Council, questions, comments? Well, I think it's particularly exciting. We are a university town. We represent thousands and thousands and thousands of students. Some are first-generation students. We have low income, high income. It's quite literally a melting pot of America. And the homecoming I went to last year showed the diversity of our student population and the diversity of our community, for all those that came out and come together to celebrate that, yeah, we're a college town, and there's a lot of students that are coming to NIU, and this is a big deal. This is potentially transformational for a lot of their lives. And I think the City of DeKalb should lean in on supporting our student population as much as we possibly can. And what better thing than to have a huge party and a huge homecoming on 38 in the heart of our downtown, which, by the way, a lot of business owners are alumni, and they support our student population 100%. So it's gonna give everyone an opportunity to be incredibly supportive of NIU, and I'm excited about it. City Manager.
Should also thank the DeKalb County Convention and Visitors Bureau, which is represented tonight.
Yes. So we have Jennifer Gross from NIU and Courtney Strohacker from the DeKalb Convention and Visitors Bureau. Do you ladies have anything you'd like to say? You knew I wouldn't let you out of here.
I know. Thank you very much, Mayor Barnes. Thank you very much to the council, City Manager Nicholas, and certainly our great friend here with Scott Zach, who's been a great integral partner in this.
Yeah, no doubt about it.
So the Community Homecoming Committee, I, myself, and the Courtney Strohacker, from the Executive Director from the Convention and Visitor Bureau, we co-chair this. And there's about 15 members on the committee representing all different facets of the community and a few parts of NIU as well. But this really has been a true communion NIU partnership to plan these activities. So we're really excited about being able to continue to build on this reestablished tradition of having a homecoming celebration downtown. It includes everything from March of the Huskies, the Big Pep Rally with our football coach and all of our coaches, all of our athletes, all of our students. This year, we're gonna unveil our Homecoming Royalty Court, and we're gonna unveil a new Victory Husky statue on the corner, right where in your back up it says, "Where Eduardo's Fountain Used to Be." Plus, we're gonna do a whole bunch of other great, fun things, and it's super family-friendly. And we're involving other community entities in the celebration as well. So we deeply appreciate the comments that you made, Mayor Barnes, and we appreciate your help, support. And as always, go Huskies.
Woo! Really looking forward to getting my Husky pride on. So thank you. All right, any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Walker.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six I.
Resolution 2023-065 has been approved, so game on, ladies. Thanks for coming out. You don't feel like you have to stay. You're more than welcome to leave. Yeah. All right, moving on to Agenda Item K. For second reading, we have Ordinance 2023-022, amending Chapter 52, Offenses Against Public Peace, Safety, and Morals. Section 5202, Disorderly Conduct. Section 52130, Parental Responsibility. And Section 52411, Nuisance Gathering. And before I ask for a motion to bring it to the floor, we have some public comment. Let's just go ahead and kick it off with Joey Moore, please, from the Barb City Food Mart. And thanks, Joey. And as a reminder, I have to keep everyone to three minutes, so.
Perfect. I appreciated the multiple warnings coming in the door, because you know I can talk. I'm Joey Moore. I'm the Director of Barb Food Mart. We just celebrated our 10th anniversary this Saturday. We're a food security agency here in DeKalb. We serve students from any of the 11 DeKalb School District schools. And we're there every single week. Currently, we're seeing about 240 or so families, so we serve about 1,000 individuals a week through Barb Food Mart. There's lots of cool food security stuff that I could spend all my time talking about, but I really wanna talk about something else that we're doing at The Pantry. For the last year, we've been working really hard to create a wraparound system for youth that are coming to us with mandated community service hours. So Barb Food Mart is run by a small staff, large group of volunteers. I see about 40 volunteers every week. And those come- Our volunteers come from all walks of life, lots of retirees, teachers, community champions, and lots of youth. Those youth also come to us because they have service hours for school and club and church, all kinds of reasons. But the students that are mandated to come because they need to complete community service hours, maybe they had made a mistake somewhere else in life. We realize that we really need to wrap around them with some additional support. So we have a comprehensive intake process where we sit down with an adult in the child's life, the student, and we sign off on really high expectations. I have high expectations for the experience I'm gonna provide, and I have high expectations for how they are gonna rise to coming to us and demonstrating their strengths. And then in the midpoint and at the end of this experience, we're checking in with adults. We are talking about the strengths that we've seen in the youth, and we're providing some feedback and a letter to the family saying, hey, this is what your student can do, and I'll sign off on that mandated community service. So we're excited just to share a little bit about that, because we know that in addition to ordinances and lots of other types of things, it's gonna take a community to wrap around families, to have high expectations for the youth, and to know that, you know, where we are today isn't where we need to be, but we can all get there together. If we're taking a little piece at Barb Food Mart, and the rest of the community entities are taking a little piece, we can see some, you know, some more wraparound and some more successes for the families. I am happy to answer questions if you call me back up.
We will. So Joey will be available to us as we discuss the ordinance, if you wanna come back up and find out a little bit more. So thanks, Joey. All right, then we also have Steve Capitan. As a reminder, sir, you have three minutes.
Okay.
He's got a timer on the TV there.
Okay, yeah, well, I need one too.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm not speaking about against any change in city code on this matter, but this ordinance isn't ready for passage. Review by the HRC is needed. In 2016, the council, without consultation with the HRC, made an effort to pass an ordinance of unlawful assembly. Concern from the community that this infringed upon civil liberties resulted in it being dropped. The nuisance gatherings section of this refers to, in there, it appears that this was a unruly party provision in the ordinance. And it looks to me like the unlawful assembly that was tried to- That was attempted to be passed seven years ago is being shoehorned into the nuisance gathering section, which is a problem in itself. I also have a concern about the lower standard of proof in administrative hearings. You know, the city manager made reference to the upsides of administrative hearings. The downside is that there's a lower standard of proof. And when we're talking about $20,000 to $35,000, that's a concern. There is also, my reading of it, that there was language that described in the- In the provision about identification to a police officer, providing identification to a police officer. The language in there was geared to more than just a police officer. It wasn't just limited to police officers. I have a concern about that language. In the Disorderly Conduct, Prohibited Conduct section, there is much duplication in the enumerated prohibited contact, conduct, combining, repeating some of the things that already exist with new enumerated prohibited conduct. And there, and it's misnumbered. That's a technical issue, but it's also misnumbered, which contributes to the perception of it being rushed. My request to you is that you please refer this ordinance to the Human Relations Commission for review and involvement of the community in coming to a better conclusion of an ordinance.
All right, then we have, I'm gonna get it wrong, Joe Planger Schultz?
Planger. God, I should know that by now.
Thanks, Joe.
Good evening, everybody. I, my name's Joe. I like to introduce myself as just a common Joe, because that's what I am. I just come here as a member of our town who has some concerns and some things that are keeping her up at night. And I see good things happening in the city. I like a lot of things that I see in the city. I like a lot of people I see in this room, and I think they're doing a good job. I'm concerned about the crime. I just really am, and I'm really, really concerned about these young people fighting each other. And I want to thank Alderman Walker. Thank you for holding that town hall meeting. That may not have drawn a lot of people, but the people who came all had something that was really important for them to say. And I spoke very forcefully because I'd been worried a lot, you know, a lot of emotion. And, but I wanna thank you. Thank you for opening up that door, that opportunity for me to meet people in the community, get to know you better. Let me tell you a little bit about myself. I worked 30 years at Algeminal Health Center. Spent my career working half of it in the community, half of it, I mean, the community part of the hospital, half of it in the forensic part of the hospital. I know the social workers arguments. Some of my best friends were social workers. But at the end of the day, I think we all want to have the safest town we possibly can have for everybody. We have a wonderful chief. Please give the chief all the tools that he needs. I think he's a good man. I think he knows what he's doing. And when he asks for something, please, do your best to give the chief what he needs. Coming back to Alderman Walker, you offered the town hall meeting where I worked, that was offered every quarter. You know what I like about that is when I think about all the patients that I've worked with, thousands of patients in my 30 years, you build relationships when you begin conversations. Am I right? When you begin to converse with people, you get to know people. You get to know what their fears and their concerns are, and things build from there. So what I'm trying to say to you all tonight is it may take you giving up some of your evenings. It may take you giving up some of your hours on weekends. I'm sorry about that. But this is a time when anxiety is high. Are we gonna be able to go see fireworks?
Joe, I gotta wrap you up. I'm sorry. But so you know, the alderpeople here, I think every one of them has held multiple award meetings since I've been here, so.
Good.
It's good. But appreciate your comments, and thank you for coming out tonight.
Yeah, and I will attend them if you have them. Thank you.
Awesome. All right, then we have Dwayne Brown. I would remind you, Dwayne, but you're usually to the second, so.
The May 30th incident at Hopkins Park, where 20 to 30 juveniles were punching and fighting, and about 100 were engaged in disorderly conduct in the parking lot, is just one of many such incidents recently. This, this type of behavior has to stop. This is a detriment to the City of DeKalb and will harm its reputation. The city says the proposal is another tool in the toolbox to help curb this behavior. We should look at all the possibilities. Parents need to take more responsibility. They need to watch social media. Look where their children are using their phones, especially TikTok. There was a 13-year-old girl got shot and killed in a TikTok challenge. Another 13-year-old girl got severely burnt in a TikTok challenge. And they show you how to steal Hyundai and Kia vehicles. This is ridiculous. Show and tell. Teach children right from wrong with calm words and actions. Set limits. Give consequences. Hear them out. Give them your attention. Catch them being good and give praise. Know when not to respond and be prepared for trouble. Discipline in talking can curb your child's behavior. Be a good role model. Give positive reinforcement. Take away privileges if necessary. The three Cs of discipline are clarity, consistency, and consequences. Parodying classes are a good idea in lieu of a fine. We have a home rule that allows us to lower the state rule. The last thing we want to happen to a juvenile is a criminal charge of disorderly conduct. This can affect his or her rights, as well as future opportunities in college or the job market. Criminal charges can affect future college students in many ways, including admissions issues, trouble finding student housing and employment, financial aid issues, reputational harm and disciplinary action, including suspension and expulsion. We need social programs and more cooperation from teachers and schools. We need a collaboration of the community, teachers, schools, churches, the police department, and government to accomplish this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. All right, I am looking for a motion to bring Resolution 20- Sorry, Ordinance 2023-022 to the floor.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Verbic, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just gonna say a few things and then defer to the council, answer any questions you may have about some of the work that's been done since the last meeting. So as you know, we talked about this on first reading, and the council approved it on first reading, but wanted to hold it over. There are a couple of things that were behind our intent. Certainly, one of those was to engender more public conversation about the meaning of the- about the meaning of the words and the passages that were to be amended in this particular municipal code section. Another was to introduce, and this may be described more clearly, what was to be introduced in the law for, at the local level, as a violation of the local ordinance. And there was new language that was introduced, and I'll touch on that in a minute. And thirdly, and Joey Moore spoke to this, and that is the importance of community service. It's not the only thing that can be offered by way of, of a phrase which gets a lot of import these days, restorative justice. There are as many definitions of that as there are probably people in this room, but there's a growing body of literature on it. So we're all learning as we're going along, and we're all contributing in some way to what that means. But I think at the heart, the general, the baseline and the common line there is that there's more to consequences and setting limits and parameters around behavior of teens than just putting them into a corner or putting them into jail or any number of these more negative reinforcements. So here's what's in, here is what is in the, the matter before you tonight. One thing is the stressing and the emphasis on community service. So let me tell you what this is not. This is not an ordinance that is designed to supplant the state statutes against criminal behavior, the violation of state statutes and the criminal code. That's not what this is. This is about disorderly conduct. And disorderly conduct has been defined in various ways. In our ordinance, before this revision was before you, it was pretty muddled, pretty obtuse. There was a lot of duplication. There's some clarity to that, but the, but we haven't added new categories of it, and we haven't subtracted. It's basically the same. What's been added? Two things. The first and most important, and the reason that we have some people in the audience tonight and the reason we've had a lot of conversation is, what is all this about parental responsibility at the local level? Okay, the state statute has a, in the combined state statutes, there is a statute that deals with parental responsibility, and that has to do with civil remedy in the event that there is damage to a person or property by a, by a teen or a minor, let's say minor. And that just means if, if damage to property, that could be a trip to the hospital and the costs that are attending, attend that. If it's damage to property, I use the explanation that the last meeting about, I guess the least impactful would be throwing some paint against a garage wall. And it can be worse. It can be breaking a window, it can be shooting, something like that. At the state level, the homeowner, in that case, the victim of this, could be able to take matters into the state court to seek civil remedy. Now, that's going to cost somebody. It's going to cost the lawyer and so forth to pursue that. All right, at the local, oh, and I should say, there is no community service in that state statute.
And just for clarity for everyone that's listening, state statute means state law is what you're referring to. That is already on the books. That could be enforced today.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. So there's no community service there. That's not part of the potential consequences. We thought it was important to emphasize that, as Joey Moore said earlier, and I don't, I can't improve on what she said, that there have been agencies in our community that have been providing community service in various ways, not just because it's connected to an ordinance violation, but because they see, they see value in it, and they've had a positive impact much of the time. But it requires parental buy-in. Our parents working with the, say, it's a business in this case, is providing an opportunity for something that's constructive, not just go sweep out the back, but help people, you know, get to their cars or whatever it is. So many hours a day, so many hours a week, up to 15 hours usually is what it is. Well, we have a system where if there is an ordinance violation, a violation of the disorderly conduct ordinance that we have, it's called COMPASS, which is an acronym, which is changing outcomes by making parents accountable. There you are. So that program has been in effect since the mid-teens, and this is 2016, 2017. And it's, it's had some impact. However, the, the impact is going to be positive only if there's a considerable effort by city officials, local businesses, local social service agencies to provide opportunities for community service that make sense, that, that help a young person to understand that there's, you know, helping others is not a bad thing. And it might inform their behavior. And so that has to be tended well. And after talking to the chief about this, we saw the need to reach out to some members of our community, and Joey was one, and is willing to work with us and also with Jennifer Yocum, who's going to take the point for us, to, to build and enhance opportunities that are already there. But how does that come into play? Well, we haven't changed that system, basically. It says so already in the code, but it's important to note. If there's an initial violation of the disorderly conduct provisions, and it doesn't involve the graduation to a state statutory violation, then, then there is a meeting between the, the officer who provided the citation and the juvenile, and parent or guardian, whoever is, is the parent or the adult in the house. And there is a discussion about what happened and how that was an offense and how it had consequences for the victims, or whoever they may be, or the victim was property in this case. And, and we hope for the best. But community service can be brought to bear right then. If we have an opportunity to do that, we should have an opportunity to do that, is what I've been saying. Should be lined up, ready to go. Officer knows what those opportunities are. Contact so-and-so tomorrow morning. Let's get something lined up. A second time, that could also be offered, but if you, if the juvenile does something again that's a violation of the stat, of a local ordinance, then there is a more involved conversation. Sometimes that's with a, one of our local not-for-profits. Sometimes it's with a trained juvenile officer to talk about a more structured. Let's talk more, in more detail now, about what's going to happen here in the next 90 days. What's going to change that will have a positive impact on the, on the teen? A third and fourth, then there could be fines. All these things are heard and can be heard on appeal if the parents say, I don't buy in this. And I, and I object to it. What do I do? What are my rights? You can go to the administrative hearing officer, which meets at, at the police station every other Monday. Met today. Had some of those cases on the docket. If the hearing officer is seeing somebody the first time, according to the clerk who's been serving that group for the last two years, on one, only one or two occasions was the first offense or going to result in a fine. And usually that's because the person didn't show up at the prescribed day and time, and there was no reason for it, or the parents didn't show up. Yes?
Okay, I just wanted some clarity on, like, where does this hearing officer come from? And like, does, does this person just make his rounds around all the schools in the district? Or how does that work?
So the hearing officer is not a judge, not elected as a judge. But hearing officers in the state of Illinois and around the country have to be certified. So they are lawyers by training and have practiced the law. And now because they're, they're doing a lower level adjudication, not unlike what a magistrate used to do, which we don't have anymore, to deal with this level of ordinance violation. And that person is, is not only well-schooled in law, but schooled in life. And, and so they're, they're not required to do recertifications on an annual basis and as you might be thinking.
Can, can the city manager finish? And then we'll open it up for questions.
Well, I was just going to say, so that's, that's the major part of the change. And it's not a lot of language, but it introduces the concept of, of a, of a process by which the parents or the guardian and, and the, the offending teen can, at the local level, try to work out whatever behavior, willful behavior was creating the problem. And that is not only a more accessible process. It's, it's not a costly process, and it can lead almost immediately to a different experience that might be helpful. It's not guaranteed, but it, it's possible. And the more meaningful that community service opportunity is, the more, I would say, the more likely, at least we want to believe, the more likely it will have a positive impact. So that's what that is. The other thing is, and we didn't talk much about it last time, it's just simply, it's a practical matter. If, if there's probable cause for the citation of a, of a juvenile offender, then it's, it's very important that the officer know that person's name. And oftentimes, juvenile first response, I'm not going to tell you my name. And they don't have to if they're not, if they haven't committed an offense. If they do commit offense, we want to contact the parents or guardian or somebody to come, and we're going to have that first session. If we have to commit an officer to sit around for two or three hours till we can find out through bystanders or neighbors or somebody who this, this particular individual is, that doesn't serve the individual, doesn't serve the parents, doesn't serve the, the police department. It's, it's a practical matter.
Alderman Walker, you got another question?
Yeah, I got a lot of questions, just to clear some things up. First of all, I want to clear some things up. So I need people like to quit, like always thinking just because I have questions or, you know, I need more clarity that, you know, I'm just sticking up just for, you know, black kids and black people. So initially, when I read over the ordinance, I, you know, I agreed with it. But then, you know, when we get up on city council that everybody wants to start talking about what they believe it is, I just didn't see that stabbing and shootings equate to an ordinance. Stabbings and shootings, you go straight to jail, in my guest image. So I want to clear that up. That's, that's one thing I want to clear up. Second thing I want to clear up is, when I look at, you know, things like this, you know, this kind of ordinance, I think about my 13-year-old daughter who was supposed to go to the pool that day. I don't like that. You know, that's, you know, and from what I'm hearing, other 13-year-olds who grew up in DeKalb, who do what they're supposed to do, they're not liking, you know, how their friends are acting these days. So it's not just, you know, some of us older people. It's the kids are starting to buy into some of the BS. They're, they're about tired of it. So I think that's a step in the right direction as well. So, but in, in saying all that, I just have a couple more questions. City manager and Chief Bird, if you could. So I was looking on the second occurrence or something was to happen in a 12-month rolling period. So it says the parent or parents will also have to be required to attend a juvenile intervention. Could one of you guys explain exactly like what that would be? Or, you know, like, what does that entail?
Well, it's a, it's not a bad description of, but it's very vague about what that means in detail. And you're absolutely right. So that's something, and I'll defer to the chief on this, but that's something that we're going to add some, some detail to.
So I, I think more in regard to that, I mean, I think this is where we start talking about the parenting classes. I mean, I think that's the mechanism at that opportunity. So I could see it, you know, where you have a child who's going to community service. But like I said, we also want to have a remedy for the parent. We want, we want to help the parent as well to, to improve as a parent. A lot of times, I think this is something that's going to be beneficial, to have, to speak to someone about parenting, somebody who has probably had more experience in parenting, you know. So I, I think personally, when I was a young parent, I mean, I called my mom all the time because she was more experienced than me, and I asked her a lot of different questions and, and, you know, and she helped me become a better parent. So, but some parents, some, I mean, some individuals don't have that person to lean on. So I think if we could provide that, I mean, it would be beneficial. So we're trying to help the child on one end, and we should be trying to help the mom as well. That way, it'll be beneficial for the family.
And Chief, if I remember right, for more clarification, if we get too detailed, one of the issues that we have is a nonprofit could offer a particular service, call it a particular thing, and that nonprofit may discontinue offering that, or the nonprofit may no longer exist going forward. So I think, if I remember, it's like other things where we have to have some vagueness because it could just change. But the intent ultimately is get the parents' classes and this child's some classes. Go ahead, Alderman Walker.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think, see, that's, that's the only issue I have. We can't just say, you know, it's going to be this or that, and we have to keep it vague. I mean, that's just, then we can change rules as we go. So, I mean, I, I just, you know, I think when we, you know, look to do things of this nature, we should already have something, you know, like a plan. Because, oh, listen, I'm, I'm for it. I'm tired of the crime and everything going on, and we need to do something to stop it. I get it, you know. Although this ordinance is not about big crimes and things of that nature. It's for the small ones that, you know, kids and parents should be held accountable for because you break my window, you're paying for it one way or another. So I do understand that. But it's just, you know, I, you know, I know you want to keep it vague for whatever reasons. I just, you know, I don't like, you know, to keep anything vague. I just like to know exactly, you know, the chain of command and what's going to be, you know, given, you know, in that situation. But I guess, Mayor Barnes, I do understand where you're coming from. So that's just one of those, I got to agree to disagree, but, you know, we all get along type of thing. So, okay, I'm sorry, because I do want to pick this apart and interrupt you whenever you guys want. I know you guys have.
Well, I'd like to open it up to other people.
Yeah, I've got one more, if you don't mind, sir.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, like, so Chief, if you don't mind if I ask you. So you're, so this is something that, you know, the police department and, you know, other local services, is, are you guys, it's going to get in the, you know, room and start throwing ideas out on how you would, you know, do some of these things? Or, you know, because it also says you have to approve the format as well. So I guess I just, you know, just for my clarity, I would like to know what the format would be, you know, when, you know, trying to come up with some of these methods of teaching parents how to parent.
Right, so the, the COMPASS is already in place. I mean, like I said, this is nothing new for us. So we have our SROs, the school resource officers, they are well-versed in this, along with Commander Lake. So we, we already, this is nothing new for DPD. Unfortunately, through COVID, a lot of these programs, we had to, you know, of course, it slowed down, everything slowed down through COVID. So, so we have Officer Sullivan, Chris Sullivan is well-versed. He's already, I mean, he's had COMPASS cases already this year. So we, we're in the, you know, this is nothing new. We can, the process is already developed. That whole, you know, we, I think the city manager talked about that, you know, that meeting of the minds. So that's the mom, that's the child, that's the officer. And then we have SROs who can attend as well, you know, and juvenile officers. So we, so we can, you know, put this child in the, in the best position to succeed. That's what we love about the pantry. I mean, so I think we talked about this at your meeting, that these small interactions, that these, at these community service, you know, situations can, could change them, or could point them in the right direction. So, so to you, I just wanted you to understand, it's nothing new. I mean, this is something that's already been in place. We have the mechanisms down. We have officers who are well-trained in COMPASS, and they understand what it can and cannot do, and, you know, what it should and what should not be. So this is just an opportunity. We're just trying to keep them from getting state charges. I know you understand that. And it's, it's just, I mean, that's really the key, is to keep an ordinance so it won't affect them in their future, you know, getting jobs at some point. But I know, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of walk you through kind of like a normal example of what would happen, because I think that's, it's going to answer your question, go to the heart of the issue. So we deal with a minor that, for example, has possession of marijuana. And a first-time offense is going to result in community service if they're found liable or they plea liable or whatnot. And the vast majority of times, there's no recidivism. There's no second offense because they've learned something from that mistake, and they've learned something from the community service that they engaged in, and they did not reoffend, right? But then there are those rare occasions, and much more so in these types of substance abuse, you know, types of cases where you have a minor in possession, where there's a second offense that may occur. And what happens then is we, you know, there's a discussion, usually with the, the parent and with the child, about what else needs to be done to prevent this. And most often, the parent has not considered the possibility of mental health, social work type of alternative treatment for substance abuse. And we will say that if you commit yourself to that type of a program, and we've identified resources for them, you know, through our administrative health hearing system, and if you show that you, you know, have compliance with this program, you know, bye-bye second offense, right? Almost always, after that, Almost always, after that, it's, you don't have a third offense. There are those rare occasions then, but that's kind of how that program has worked in the past, for a specific example.
Thank you for that clarity, I appreciate it.
Alderman Verbit.
Yeah, I think that to Dwayne Brown's point is that we have to be all in with this. We hear about, and I want to thank everyone that reached out over the last couple of weeks, that we are all facing this challenge. It's the city, it's the school district, it's the regional office of education. And if you've heard me say this before, excuse me, but that is really going to be the only way to broadly address these issues, is identifying where these challenges lie and how we can pool our resources together and our expertise. So school district has a different set of expertise, regional office of education, the county, the judiciary, in fact. We brought up state statute earlier, and one thing I know council's heard me talk about over the years has been the number-one crime in the city of DeKalb, that's rarely talked about. Anyone have a guess what that is? That's chronic truancy. So according to the Illinois State Report Card of last year, over 700 children every single day are not attending high school. That is against the law in the state of Illinois. So us discussing this years ago when I was first elected, Mayor Smith, Alderman Noriko at the time, we attended a summit with superintendents of schools in the region and the regional office of education, what can we do about this? And the problem has grown much worse since 2017, when I was first elected, and the numbers are horrific. And we're seeing the children that are truant get into harm's way and become a part of the crisis that, in my opinion, is avoidable if we are all in. If the mayor assigns a couple of council members to create a consortium or association or something where we're talking about this in one room together with all of our governing bodies that really do want to put children and families first. And I think that it's overdue that we have a coordinated approach, to Dwayne Brown's point, at addressing this, rather than, again, the silos that you keep hearing bring up, the only silos in DeKalb should be the ones on the farm, not in the city of DeKalb. So I think if we can get our governing bodies together, get some consensus, get some solutions, get some resources, I, for one council member, I'm ready to invest in solutions that are smart, that are measurable, that can prove the outcomes that we're looking for. So let's get to work.
Awesome. Alderwoman Larson.
I just want to point out with Councilman Walker, I think if we were tried to take, there's this, this, and this, and these are the only choices that we have for our children, it, to me, it's really trying to fit these in like just little slots. And I appreciate this kind of a program with the people that we have out in our community, in this room, that let's look at this child as an individual, and this child who did this, not, I hate to, crime, whatever, poor judgment action, might just be the follower along. And then there's the other one that, eh, a little more involved, and then there's the instigator. And to try to push all three of those, and this is the punishment, this is what you have, or that you have parents who, I know that one thing on Russell Road, you had a parent that was driving their kids from fight to fight, totally different parent than the one that showed up and said, "I heard my son here, you get your butt in the car, and we're gonna talk when we get home." Two totally different parents. So, but the kids are in the same thing. And so I think by having the freedom of multiple choices for our magistrate or whatever we call him, that, I think that strengthens our system and that we're not gonna have somebody overly punished, or, I mean, it fits the crime. I mean, when we grew up, it was like, you know, that you, what you had to do, you know, the day after school, it fit the crime. And I think this gives the tools for our police and to make it fit. So I'm for this.
Alderman Walker.
No, A Barb, Ms. Larson, Alderman Larson, I get what you're saying, I really do. But, you know, I think when it comes to things like this, why I look at it things a lot differently than most of you is because I'm from a whole different neck of the woods, and I've seen, you know, the same crime or whatever, ordinance, whatever, and I've seen, you know, a black and a white kid, and I always, always just about seen the black kid get more of the punishment than the white kid. Now, I'm not saying that's what we would do here, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that, you know, I have a duty to myself, forget my ward or the city, just for myself, to not, to be able to express, you know, I've seen things like that. So when things are vague, you know, you can go left or right, depending on who the person is or the parent is. So, I mean, but I do understand we have a huge crime problem in DeKalb, and like I said, I got a 13-year-old daughter who is sick of it, she, you know, and I'm keeping her in the house, and that's why she, you know, hates me these days. But, but I do understand we have a huge crime problem, and we do need to get something, you know, on the books. So, you know, I got the clarity I needed, and I appreciate everybody for the clarity, and let's give it a go.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Solomon Smith.
I guess I'll throw in, thanks for bringing up the state statute. This is just mirrors the state statute with lesser penalties, let's just spell it out. You know, there's been some twisting of words. Who we forget out of this picture is the victim. You know, what about the parent's child who is, ends up in the hospital and has medical bills? The $20,000 is to civil liability against the parents of the child that caused it, to pay for the medical bills of the person that was injured. That's what this is entailed. It's not a penalty, it's paying your dues, if you will, as Alderman Walker said, you break my window, somebody's gotta pay for it. The other thing is, you know, we truly forget about the victim. And one in particular is a parent who is with their child at the pool. What about that parent, that child? They have rights as well that we totally are neglecting by not doing something. So I am, I'm for this 100%.
So for me, I thought you wanted another comment. For me, I expressed my opinion of this the last time, and I still hold fast to that. I appreciate what you've just said and what you just said, Alderman Smith and Alderman Walker. There are a lot of parents out there, and there's a lot of kids that are just scared, plain and simply scared. And we aren't focusing on them. And this is one way that we can try and lean in to make sure that, and I've heard this from parent over and over again, but I want kids to be able to go to school and feel okay. I want them to come home and walk around their neighborhood and feel okay. And this is one thing that we can do to hopefully make some sort of an impact on that. So I'm really for it. And I gotta thank Joey and the Barb City, Barb Food Mart. The program that you have is awesome, and the fact that you're leaning in and really want to give kids that are gonna be in this process an opportunity to succeed, actually give them a little love, encouragement, that could be the thing that changes them. So I just want to say I'm proud to be a DeKalb citizen with you guys doing the mission that you're doing, and I want to thank you immensely, and I love the idea that you want to encourage some other nonprofits to, here's the example, and here's what we can do. So thank you for that. Yes, Alderman Walker.
Good, if I could second that. So my wife and I met with Joey, and man, if we had more women or more people like this in this town, you know, I could see things going in the right direction. And when, after I met with you and you told me, or you expressed that you want to be that person to turn the kid around, because I was that kid, I got in a little bit of trouble, had to knock somebody out, then had to go to the Ace Hardware Store, and I got with that older man that I didn't have one in my life, and he kind of gave me the ropes on how I need to be as a young man. And when you said that, you know, you want to be that person, or somebody on your staff to be that person, that's when I looked at this, and it all works for me. So thank you for the work you do, and thank you for Jennifer back there. Yeah, you can say whatever you want.
I just want to clarify, it's really, what we're doing at Barb Food Mart, it's not about me, it's not about me being able to impact youth, it's about our volunteer team. And so we have a really committed community of people coming forward saying, hey, I'm gonna show up every week, I'm gonna give of my volunteer time, and now I'm asking them, and can you do this as well? But our volunteers in our DeKalb community, not just at Barb Food Mart, but across the social service agency, are really a strong backbone for DeKalb, and we're gonna lean in a little bit on those volunteers and ask them to be the mentors and the examples for our youth that they need.
Awesome. I owe you some hours, so lean on me. Absolutely, yes. Alderman Verbit.
And I'm serious about this recommendation, so what I'm looking for from council is direction to the city manager to explore the possibility of a consortium where, not that we would necessarily meet every month, but I believe in everyone to come up with the structure that we would need to put our resources together. And, you know, whether that's Jennifer leading the way for our city, not that you have any spare time as it is, but I think even a quarterly meeting of the minds of our governing bodies together, whether that's city manager, the county, the ROE, how do we address this together and come up with those measurable goals? What are those things we want to accomplish? Is it reducing the number of truant high school students from 700 last year to 500 this year? Those kinds of things. And then I think that as we see those measures take effect, we will see the families and children in crisis be reduced.
I don't disagree with you at all. I think we made some huge strides with additional SROs, this ordinance here. More needs to be done, absolutely. I don't know if we're the ones that lead that, drive that, or if it is the schools, but I'm definitely willing to have a conversation, I can reach out to the president of the school board, see what the interest level's there, and go from there, absolutely. I'll commit to you on that, yep. Any other comments or questions? All right, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbit?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six yes?
Alderman Zazada just came, I don't know if, because she's at the end of the vote, or how does that work?
She's before the vote.
Yeah, she would have the ability to vote.
Okay, all right.
Zazada?
Yes.
All right.
Seven yes, ma'am.
Awesome. So ordinance 202, ordinance 2023-022 has been passed on second reading. Moving on to ordinance's first reading, number one, ordinance 2023-023, approving a plat of dedication for the Kimberly Drive right-of-way improvements from Delta New House Corporation for $7,300, 917 Kimberly Drive, PIN 08-015-176-008. Can I get a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Walker. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The title almost tells the tale here. There is a dedication that's been negotiated with our city engineer and the owners of 917 Kimberly Drive for about two-tenths of an acre, which helps with the cul-de-sac that is going to be built on the east end of Kimberly, and this is part of that Kimberly Road reconfiguration, which, between Normal and Black Hawk that we've been talking about for the last year and a half or so, we recommend your approval.
Any comments or questions about this one? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbit?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Ordinance 2023-023 is passed on first reading, I would take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Zazada and seconded by Alderman Perkins. Questions or comments on that? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbit?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2023-023. All right, moving on to agenda item M, reports and communications, council member reports. Who would like to kick us off? Alderman Verbit.
A warm Ward 6 welcome to WW Wings in the University City Shopping Center, 817 West Lincoln Highway, I believe, Unit H at the end of the University City.
Awesome. Alderman Walker.
Well, so in Ward 7, in Devon Air, we've kind of been having some issues, where we've been having, we don't know if they're kids or whatever, they've been trying to break into houses, and we had a little bit of, you know, narcotics selling. But I want to reiterate, call the police when you see anything that looks suspicious, don't call John Walker. Call the police. Chief Burke cannot reiterate enough, call the police. Do not call John Walker.
Well said. All right, Alderman Smith.
Five guys sign us up, my wife is extremely happy, so I guess they must be making movement. And a special note to my brother-in-law, Colonel David Nowak, retired from the Air Force, 42 years, so he lives in DeKalb, if anybody sees him.
Wow.
Yeah, he went in when I think he was 17, and he will be 60, so 42 years with the Air Force.
Alderwoman Zazada.
I apologize for my delay, we had a celebration of life, and so I didn't want to miss this vote, and I thought it was really important regarding the children in our community and what's been going on, and I definitely feel like it was the right choice to take some time and let the community have some time to speak to it, and I just felt like there was a lot of support for it. So that's all right now.
Alderwoman Larson.
Just, it's the best of times and the worst of times because road repairs are in full swing until you get behind the trucks and it takes hours. So just everyone be careful out in the roads, and know in a week it'll be smoothest sailing and great roads underneath us.
Alderman Perkins.
I'd like to thank Jenny Oakham for helping set up a food pantry at the Elks Lodge just past Saturday, was pretty successful, had a pretty good turnout, had good weather for it, so good stuff.
Me, there's been a ton the last few weeks, but I'll just say some highlights, Memorial Day Parade was phenomenal, thanks for fire department chief, it was just absolutely wonderful to see, the crowds were really good, which was awesome to see. So maybe this is another thing that we can do and expand upon, which I think would be awesome. As usual, did my WLBK radio show, met with the community gardens to continue that conversation. Obviously, that's been a topic that has had multiple, multiple, multiple conversations. And I'll reiterate what others have said, yeah, the road construction, always remember, this is what you want. Right? So remember that, when you're driving down the roads and the trucks stop you, this is what we all want, and we want to see our roads improved, and boy, everywhere I'm driving, I'm seeing those orange trucks, and I'm just, I'm just loving it. I know Zach, you got to be pretty busy out there, but doing a great job, city looks better each and every day, so really excited about all that. How about you, city manager?
No report.
All right. Moving on to executive session, I would take a motion to hold an executive session for approval, sorry, approval to hold executive session in order to discuss the purchase or lease of real property as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2C5, the sale or lease of real property as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2C6, and personnel as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2C1. Can I have a motion to move to executive session?
So moved, second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Walker. Roll call.
Verbit?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven yes?
All right, our regular meeting is now in recess. As I always say, don't have to go home, but you can't stay here.